... With liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. We can have a moment of silence, please? For the women in the armed forces, and for those people unfortunately in New Milford who have passed, there is nine of them as of today in COVID-19. Thank you. Next is a public comment. So let me get to the public here. And I'm gonna unmute, and then you can tell me if you'd be interested in public participation. Allison? Allison, would you be interested in public participation?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
My turn? Okay. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me some time to speak at the meeting here. My name is Allison Seidel. I'm a resident of New Milford for almost seventeen years, and I'm also a local psychologist in the community. And I just...
Allison, could you give the address for Stephanie?
Um, just from my professional reasons, I prefer not to have that stated publicly, if that's okay?
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to make a comment tonight to urge the council to reinstate the money that was cut last week through the Board of Finance. I understand that there are a lot of pressures right now that everyone is under financially, medically, socially, emotionally, and that there is a desire to protect people financially by keeping taxes lower. But I would just urge you to consider that the cuts that were made by the Board of Finance will only result in roughly forty to forty-five dollars per household per year, which is less than a dollar a week. And I understand that there are people who live paycheck to paycheck, but I think that if we compare that to the collective benefit that that money would bring to the school district and to the town, I think we really need to think about this coming year as something unprecedented. We can't compare this to previous fiscal years, previous school budgets. I think that we are looking at figuring out how students are gonna have to help, how they're gonna be helped to catch up, how to help businesses get back on their feet, how to help people from a mental health perspective. You know, I'm sure that all of you are hearing the things that are in the news about the rates of depression skyrocketing with people being at home. And I think the absolute last thing that we need in New Milford is less money in the education budget. The teachers in New Milford are already paid less than in surrounding towns, and I hear constantly about teachers leaving to go to other districts. And I think that in order to keep New Milford moving forward, in order to take care of our residents and our students and our community as a whole, that we really need to put as much money back into the budget as possible based on what was cut. I was at some of the meetings earlier this year when we were talking about ESS and the, you know, I know that all of you heard the statements from many students and families and how that was a life-saving program. It seems like ages ago at this point, like it was eons ago, but it really wasn't that long ago. And all of those families are probably struggling again now that everyone is home. And I just urge you to not think about, you know, the nickel and dime of the short-term gain that might be there and really think about all of the resources that our district and community will need in the coming year and not to reinstate this money. So, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Angie? Angie, would you like to say something tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. Brian McCauley, would you like to say something tonight? Brian, if you are, you have to unmute yourself.
I don't have anything to say tonight. I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Cindy, do you have anything tonight? Cindy, do you have anything to say tonight?
My husband and I would like to contribute to Bell.
That's very generous.
Okay.
We will contribute to Bell and the flag. What? Flag?
Cindy, do you have anything tonight?
Dedicating it in our name. After all, we are paying for it.
About Ed Pagan. Ed, do you have something to say tonight?
I don't know about that.
Unmute yourself.
I feel this is God's house, and we filled it with our own hands. I don't think the Lord's gonna like it much. We put somebody else's name in it.
What is going on?
Ed, do you have something you'd like to say tonight?
That was bizarre.
Yep. Okay.
It could've been a hacker. Maybe it was a hacker.
Gail, do you have anything to say tonight?
No, I don't.
Okay. Hillary, do you have something to say tonight? You'd have to unmute yourself. Okay. Kathy, do you have something you'd like to say tonight? She's offline now, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Walter.
Oh.
Uh, Leslie?
Do I have to unmute myself if I want to speak?
Yes, sir, you will. Leslie? We're still doing public participation, Walter? I'm going through the...
I'm sorry, Ted. Say it again, Mr. Mayor.
We're still going through public participation?
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Leslie, are you interested in speaking tonight? Leslie, would you be interested in speaking tonight? Leslie? Would you be interested in speaking tonight? Okay. Sharon, would you be interested in speaking tonight? And Tammy McInerney, would you be interested in speaking tonight?
Hello, everybody. No, I'm just listening, and I hope everybody is well. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy, would you be interested in speaking tonight? Timothy? Okay. Chairman O'Connor, would you be interested in speaking tonight? Walter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Wendy, would you be interested in speaking tonight? Wendy, would you be interested in speaking tonight? Okay. All right, that's all that we have for people that are as not panelists, attendees. So now we'll move on to the agenda itself. Next is mayor's remarks. Very quickly, I'd just like to update the council on the numbers so far for the COVID-19 confirmed cases. As of today, in speaking with Mike Cresspin, our health director, in the state of Connecticut, it's twenty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-nine confirmed cases. In Litchfield County, there's eight hundred and sixty-four. In New Milford, there's two hundred and three. And unfortunately, we had another COVID person deceased today, so that's nine. We continue with our protocols by Governor Lamont, which is stay safe, stay home protocols, which is hand hygiene, gatherings of five or less, making sure that if you have left the state, that you come back and you self-quarantine for fourteen days. You make sure that you wear a mask unless you have an underlying condition that prevents you from doing so. Make sure that you do your social distancing six feet or greater. And we continue to have the New Milford Police Department patrol the fields, the playgrounds that are closed, the skate park that's closed, also monitoring our town parks to make sure we have proper social distancing. I'd like to thank the police department for that. Also, I'd like to thank our first responders, medical staff, everyone, volunteers, all everybody working together as we go through this pandemic. And in speaking with Mike Cresspin, we're hoping we're right now looking at we may be towards the top of this. The majority of the cases that we're seeing now are involved in the nursing homes. So the rest of the community, it seems like we're kind of flattening out. And Mike will have more on that as we continue to move forward during the week. That's pretty much all I have as far as mayor comments.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Item four, consent agenda. Motion to accept consent agenda, item four A, item four B. There are no refunds, so if you'd like to accept that, you can. We'll stick with the minutes.
Do we have a second? All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Chris Claesbro, second.
Luke Skelly.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought it was Chris.
Oh, Dr. Skelly, okay.
Any, so we have the confirmed, anybody that opposes? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item five, presentation from Greg, Director of Finance.
Good evening, all. This is the financial report as of March. It is business almost as usual in finance. Operations are continuing, albeit somewhat modified. Bills are being paid. Bids are solicited and awarded. Payroll is functioning, and the books are being kept. The budget process is continuing and on schedule, and the budget publication will appear in the paper May eighth. Revenues are at ninety point nine percent of budget, and expenditures are at sixty-eight point six percent of budget without encumbrances. On a straight-line basis, we would expect to be at seventy-five percent. Tax collections are at ninety-nine point seven percent of budget overall, with current taxes at ninety-nine point nine percent of budget. Overall, we have nine million four hundred fourteen thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents left to collect one hundred percent of our revenues, with the majority of those funds coming from the state in the form of ECS, Town Aid Road, LoSIP, and Municipal Revenue Sharing. We can also expect transfers in from Waste Management and WPCA debt reimbursement, as well as ambulance debt reimbursement. I am confident that we will receive the majority of our outstanding balances. We will go over budget in the area of unemployment compensation by approximately twenty-five thousand dollars, and I will adjust that at year-end. In summary, on a cash basis, revenues are at ninety-three million seven hundred ten thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents, and expenditures are at seventy-two million two hundred fifty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents, leaving the town with a positive cash flow of twenty-one million four hundred fifty thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Questions?
I got a question.
Yep.
Greg, you mentioned that out of the nine million four hundred fourteen thousand, that most of that was per state revenue. Do you have a number on that, or no?
Uh, in total, I can go through a couple of the major line items.
You don't have to be real on the many.
Two lines from the state, so six hundred, I'll just round it. Six seventy-four for Muni Revenue Sharing, five fifty-six for Town Aid Roads, a hundred ninety-three thousand for LoSIP. ECS, we're probably looking at five point six million dollars. So the lion's share of that nine million is in state revenues.
So you're around at seven million-ish, so around two million.
Right. For transfers in, that's the use of Waste Management and WPCA money, that's one million five hundred forty thousand. So on the revenue side, we're in good shape this year.
Thank you, Greg.
I expect all the state revenues to come in, so...
We have a date on that, or no?
Um, you know, usually, you know, ECS usually comes in late June, and that's the big dog in the fight. So we'll be looking out for that. And, you know, the other monies, they've been approved. Some of it was bonding money, the LoSIP, the Town Aid Road, and the Bonding Commission just authorized the payment of that money. So we should be receiving that, you know, obviously within the next couple of months.
Thank you, Greg.
Does anybody else have any questions for Greg?
No questions.
Yeah.
Just to comment.
Yes, sir.
Well, Greg is doing a tremendous job, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Greg.
Did you hear that, Mayor? Did you hear that, Mayor?
Yes, sir, I heard that. Thank you, Walter.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Just one question for Greg, this is Chris. So I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. You don't, Greg, you don't see any reason why ECS revenue would be held back late or reduced or anything?
No, I think the issue's going to come the first quarter of next fiscal year.
Right.
The state, I haven't heard anything to the contrary about state revenues being held up or reduced or anything of that nature. So I'm confident, I would think we would have heard by now, Chris.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Greg? Okay, thank you, Greg.
All right, thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Katie, you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, item number six, Economic Development Presentation by Karen Pollard.
Karen?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So a quick update on economic development activity. As many of you are already aware, we have really turned our strategy towards responding to the coronavirus crisis in our community. We did have some issues with businesses and supply chain issues early to mid-March, mostly issues surrounding Asia and Europe, being able to supply our local businesses with their products, especially raw materials. Since then, we have had to change our strategy to really focus on two specific areas right now. The first priority that we, of course, started with back in March was with communications and making that priority number one. The second is to prepare the businesses for recovery and position them so they're ready to reopen when it is safe to do so. I am gonna do a little bit more on the communication first, however. Objective one was for us to contact every business in the community to gather updated emergency contact data, including email. We had excellent address data through our previous collections. What we did not have was contact information for businesses if their door was closed and locked in order to get in touch with the owners. So that has been the absolute top priority. The, there were fifteen staff members who looked up phone numbers and helped me make phone calls. They looked up websites. They helped direct people to correct information instead of getting incorrect information from a number of sources, and also made those phone calls and then triaged so that anyone with a significant problem that wasn't going to be resolved easily was directed to me personally. So we currently have one thousand four hundred twenty-one entries of accurate business information, although there were some businesses who declined to supply us with emails. But again, we now have a resource for all of our departments that is much more accurate and usable than what we had previously. We also did partner with Small Business Development Center to collect economic impact data early on, and I believe the date was about March tenth, that we began collecting that from our businesses in order to aid the governor in declaring a disaster in Connecticut and then also giving us a blueprint for who is going to need immediate financial help once we were approved, once that disaster declaration was done. And again, all red flag situations, anything that was really, you know, business stopping was directed to me. Objective number two was for the Economic Development Department to be a consistent and reliable source of information about programs, resources, technical assistance for completing applications, financial estimates, and economic impacts. So after the governor made the disaster declaration, there were some programs early in March, or I should say, middle of March, that became available, including what's known as the IDOL program. It stands for Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That's a program that's been used for a long time in natural disasters, and that was one of the first programs that became available to businesses in New Milford. So immediately, we were able to start working with businesses. Many manufacturers, in fact, have used this program. And this has been funded two additional times since that period in March. Let's see. We, again, we were triaging business problems, and as other programs came about, which have happened on a very regular basis, we've been able to help direct businesses to which programs they're eligible for, if they need help with the application, either I would help them or our partners at the Small Business Development Center or at the state are able to assist. So there is multiple sources for free help in filling out all of these applications. We have modified the business, the backslash business webpage of the town website twice since March twenty-third. It is due for another update. It is a static page, so it doesn't change automatically. It does have to be updated manually. And again, I get excellent assistance in helping make that happen regularly. We are sending updates daily on Facebook and other social media, and then we are emailing the businesses who have been kind enough to give us their email addresses either weekly or bi-weekly on business updates. And it's mostly been bi-weekly because that's how much changes in the course of a week. And there is another scheduled to go out tonight with additional new information just from today. Our third objective under communication is we're at the point where we need to enhance our two-way communication. So in addition to asking for help, we are going to be doing a survey to collect data from our businesses, searching for gaps in assistance, and again, hearing who has not heard back from their applications, where are the lags in funding, who are the folks that didn't apply yet and need to get some help immediately before this new money is gone as well. I have done a couple of video presentations on Facebook. Again, that's easy to be shareable with folks. They are usually very topic-specific. The last one was on unemployment, the IDOL program and the PPP program. Those three things would account for probably close to eighty percent of every phone call that I handle. And again, there are a lot of tricks, twists, and turns in these various programs, and I just am trying to help individual business owners figure out how to get the help that they need, whether it's financial, again, whether it's technical, or whether it's, in some cases, helping their people connect to the unemployment system. Priority two is getting us ready for recovery. And right now, we are starting to turn our attention to assessing industry needs for a recovery. We do have businesses, fortunately, that are essential and serving the public every day, and we need to hear from them as to what's going to make them continue to be safe locations. Many of you might have heard that the state of Connecticut will be supplying essential businesses that are open now. If they apply quickly, the opportunity to get some free masks for their employees, two masks per employee, the business has to be fewer than fifty employees, and hopefully, they will be able to fill most, if not all, of the requests that come in. So that will be done this week. That was posted again on Facebook today. I asked Denise at the Chamber to send that out. We're using all of our partners and all of our communication tools at this point to be able to get the word out when there's an opportunity that will save our folks the money and keep their employees safe. We are also still supporting business applications to state and federal resources. And then if they're not hearing back, or they get denied for some reason, we're trying to problem-solve, again, using our partners, using the legislative offices in Connecticut, as well as at the federal level, to investigate where things have gone off the rails for those applications. We're also communicating and following all of the technical and physical requirements for safe operations and helping support the Health Department with communicating that to the businesses. Or again, if they have questions on how do I implement this, what should I do? Or just basically solve problems in the application and implementation of these safety requirements, that they have a place to call and can talk through whatever their concerns are. Again, that gathering data from businesses that we're going to be doing in a survey later this week is also going to focus on gaps in funding. Who are the businesses who have not been funded, whether they requested it or whether they felt that their business didn't qualify, and then trying to match them with other programs. Tammy, at five o'clock tonight, delivered a new list of small business financial resources that we'll be able to distribute, again, this evening as part of our Monday update this week. And some of those are specifically oriented to specific industries like hair salons, beauty parlors, nail technicians, tattoo parlors, those folks in the personal care industry who are really suffering right now and have few business-related resources of money to go to, just in part because they're such small operations. And then, of course, third is workforce. There are businesses hiring, there are businesses who are laying off. There are businesses hiring, there are businesses who are laying off. This is going to continue to be a fluid situation. It has been, and I think that's going to continue as the effects wax and wane through the summer and then into probably the fall. Most of the experts indicate that we anticipate disruption at least that long. How long it will actually be is unknown at this point, but making sure that people who want to work can find jobs that are suitable. I did start a Facebook page for New Milford businesses that are hiring. There are some Kimberly-Clark jobs that pay very well that are available now, as well as in other essential businesses. EverSource is hiring. Other really good jobs are hiring. Of course, there are also jobs at grocery stores and other essential retail businesses that are probably more likely to be part-time, seasonal, or temporary. So depending on what somebody is looking for, there's a wide variety out there right now. But again, I think it's going to be a fluid situation for the foreseeable future while the community and local businesses respond to the illness and the impacts and the financial stress that the whole situation is causing. That is my update at the moment. I'm certainly happy to take any questions, and hopefully I can answer them.
Does anybody have any questions? Doug?
Just real quick, thanks Karen. I actually saw your video about how to guide people through the PPP, and also you had mentioned the PUA, which is what could help self-employ people that don't fund into the unemployment. And so that's also available to people. And I noticed today, I think the IRS actually upgraded their Get My Payment to make it easier for people who don't have direct pay so they can file. That's another thing that I thought would be of interest, but I did see your video. Very informative, but just touch on the PUA for the people that are listening that don't file into unemployment and help them maybe find an avenue for some revenue.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. And it is a confusing situation, and the instructions at first from the State Department of Labor were not clear. So there are a lot of people with misunderstandings about unemployment and how to apply for it. At first, well, all right, so if you are laid off from your position and you're a W-2 employee, you are eligible for state unemployment and you file, and that huge backlog that the State Department of Labor had should be just about resolved. So everybody eligible under the standard state unemployment program should have already been processed and should already have started. If not already receiving benefits, they should start probably this week. That was what the Department of Labor has said. They've issued numerous statements about it. If somebody is eligible for state unemployment insurance, they should go ahead and apply because we have this sole proprietor, independent contractor situation. So what the federal government did in the CARES Act is approve unemployment for sole proprietors and independent contractors and other people who are not normally allowed to get unemployment because that's not the system that they pay into at the state. So what happens is many of those people have heard through the CARES Act that they are now eligible for unemployment, and what we were told was go ahead and let those folks apply. What wasn't clear at the time is that each sole proprietor, independent contractor, and other person actually has to get denied from the State Department of Labor. The first thing that happens is they apply, everything looks good, they get an email that says, "Things are fine, we're processing your application, you don't have to send any more information." And then they get a denial letter in the mail that says you are denied, and that's usually when I get the phone call. So what happens at that point is they are going to be eligible, in most cases, for the federal PUA, the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance. However, the portal on the State Department of Labor website is not open yet, so they will have to apply for the federal unemployment insurance benefits. That is supposed to, as of right now, be available on the Department of Labor website in a separate portal on April 30th. They have bumped the timeframe a couple times already, but right now, they're saying April 30th is the day. So April 30th, right now, sole proprietors, independent contractors, and others who would be eligible under the federal program but are not eligible under the state program can then apply. That is retroactively available to them, so they can go back as far as February 2nd in applying for those benefits, even though they won't be able to apply until April 30th. You will not be able to just go ahead and apply for the PUA if you haven't been denied by the state first. So again, it's a little confusing. It wasn't really explained clearly at the beginning, but that is the very clear direction we have as of right now. And I'll just add the $600 that many people have heard about. The people who are currently receiving unemployment through the state should start to see the additional $600 this week. Again, it's retroactive, so if you've been out of work for three weeks, you may be getting in the next couple weeks a lump sum payment of those past week's benefits. For the sole proprietors and independent contractors, the Department of Labor says you don't have to do anything extra to get the $600 additional that you will be able to get in and collect as part of your benefit. Again, first, you have to go through this state process, then the federal approval. After that, you will, when you start getting your unemployment, it will include the $600, and then again, you'll at some point get a lump sum payment of your past benefits on that one.
Any other questions for Karen? Chris?
No, I'm good. She actually answered the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
Thank you.
Walter or Dave, do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
So we're up to item seven, Grants in Compliance Specialist. Tammy Riordan is going to present to us for discussion and possible action on the adoption of the annual Fair Housing Resolution. You have that in your packet. Is Tammy with us tonight?
Tammy?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Hi, Ken.
Yep. Hi. I'm glad to see everybody here, and I hope you're all well. What you have in front of you this evening is a simple request for an annual Fair Housing Resolution. This is something that is required by the Department of Housing as a recipient of small cities grant funding. We're required to pass this annual resolution. It is also a requirement for any future consideration of funding through the CDBG program. So the resolution is quite long. I do request that it be incorporated as part of the minutes. I did supply it in full format. Hopefully, you all received that in your electronic packets so that you do not have to read it. It just needs to be incorporated into the minutes. Once you pass this, assuming all is well, I will have the mayor sign it. I have additional documentation for fair housing and equal opportunity that I will have the mayor sign that are also just annual updates in conjunction with the Personnel Office, providing information out to the public regarding what our processes and our procedures are for equal employment opportunity, nondiscrimination, those sort of things. However, those documents do not require a resolution to be passed on your behalf. This is the only one that does.
You looking for a motion for that, Tammy?
Yes, I am, Walter.
I will move that resolution.
Second.
Okay.
I have one question for Tammy, though.
Yes.
Are there any changes in this resolution than what's been approved in the past?
Not at all.
So for the record, I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm not used to doing that. So for Stephanie, for the record, the motion is to approve the Fair Housing Resolution for the town in New Milford per the document that is on file for the mayor to sign.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Do we have a second?
Michael Mayhem.
I just wanted to note it. Okay, item eight.
Thank you.
This is a, the motion I'm going to make is to set a time and date for a remote virtual special town public hearing, excuse me, remote virtual public hearing to be held pursuant to and in compliance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B and 7I-13 to hear and consider public comment on the 2020 to 2021 fiscal year budget. The proposed date and time for the public hearing is June 1st, 2020, at 6:15 PM.
Okay, second from Chris. Randy, are you available? Randy, you'd have to unmute yourself.
I don't see him unmute.
There we go. Randy?
Oh, he's there.
Yep. Could you give a little bit of background for the council on this?
Sure. This is the result of Executive Order 7I-13. You recall that Executive Order modified and mandated a certain process to avoid gatherings concerning the annual budget. The provisions in that, exactly in that EO, state that the protocol that we've been following, that is, the town council sending the budget to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance doing its review and adjustment, and then sending it back, is exactly what that contemplates, that Executive Order contemplates, except in towns in which the budget authority is the town, is the Board of Finance. In New Milford, our charter is silent on the budget authority, which means if you take a look at the activity of the bodies involved in the budget, it's a co-bicameral budget authority. It's the town council, and it's the Board of Finance. In such a situation, we follow our charter until it becomes inconsistent with the Executive Order, and that's what we've done. So now, it went to the Board of Finance already. They've held their public hearing, they've done their adjustments, and they presumably have sent it back. I do know they sent it back to the town council. Now, the town council holds a public hearing, a virtual public hearing, as per Executive Order 7B, which is a different Executive Order. That's how you hold a public hearing, which you've been doing in order to take public comment. And then, following that, the town council votes. Normally, there's a, instead of a public hearing, it's a town meeting, an informational town meeting, which is the same benefit, and then it goes to a referendum. The law says we cannot do that. And as you know, an Executive Order under Section 1-65BB, as in baseball, states that an Executive Order has the force of law. That's like a statute, that's like a case, a Supreme Court case, and just like a regulation. That provision means that it doesn't go anymore to a referendum this year or a town meeting where there's any vote. As a matter of fact, the Executive Order reads that the budget-making authority, the final review of it, shall be approved by that authority without vote. Without vote is the English language. It means it doesn't get voted on, despite speculation to the contrary. That's the law. So the reality is that, once it comes to you, once it goes to the public hearing on the first, you'll be able to take that information just as the referendum would have at an informational town meeting. And then, right thereafter, you make your decision, and that becomes the budget, and that's how it works. And that's not so much in a nutshell, but that's the long and the short of the results of the Executive Orders that we're operating under. The only way you could get away from that Executive Order, because we researched it and we have actually collaborated with a number of municipal lawyers in trying to speculate as to how to get a referendum or a public hearing, is to string it out like you are, but also, because you have a 30-day extension, which you're using, but also, the governor would have to lift that Executive Order, the Executive Order 7I-13. He hasn't done that in his wisdom, and that's his prerogative. That's the force of law. And what we've learned behind the scenes, that the rationale is that he wanted to make a uniform system of approval, so there wouldn't be one town doing one thing, another town doing another, even though we do that normally under charters. So in any event, that's the provision, bearing in mind, contact to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General endorses exactly what the governor has done. He's reviewed this stuff, and his office has, and so has he, and he endorses this and finds it lawful, and that's who we are. That's why that is drafted the way, that agenda item is drafted the way it is.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Katie?
Katie, are you?
You have to unmute yourself, Katie.
Item 8B, move to set a time and date for a remote virtual special town council meeting to be held pursuant to and in compliance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B, as in boy, and 7I-13 to consider, vote on, and adopt the 2020-2021 fiscal year budget. The proposed date and time for said special town council meeting is June 1st, 2020, at the later of 7:00 PM or immediately following the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Walter. Walter seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
This is for Randy. Are you still there, Randy?
I'm here.
Yeah, my question is this. Hypothetically, should the governor lift his Executive Order? Would our town charter then override how we vote this evening? Yes. In other words, if he lifts the Executive Order tomorrow, then the town council would have to reconvene. You'd have to set a new date for a town meeting, an informational town meeting and a referendum. So everything would, in other, the town council still has to meet. They have to make their adjustments. They have to do what they're going to do. So that process stays the same. But at that point, you'd have a, the mayor would suggest that you call it a informational town meeting as per the charter, and then send it to a referendum. So the answer, Mike, is yes.
Absolutely.
The mayor is really, the mayor is acutely aware of this because that's what the hope was when he delayed, when he took the extensions that are authorized. Right. So, I know, but I was just concerned that our votes this evening would be binding. No. The town council can reverse a vote in something like this because the authority that you were given has been modified. Was under a different, yes. Okay, thank you. So we revert to the existing law, which would be our charter. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. And Walter?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Abstention? Thank you, everybody. Good night, all. Rest of the night.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Katie, you can send me those motions?
I sure can.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 Bye, Mr. Bear.